I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Crystal, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Moss? Yes, we do. Councilmember Contreras present, Councilmember Gillian present, Councilmember Rennenbaum present, Mayor Perotin Young present, and Councilmember Crumble present.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join me in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 11th, 2024. Has everyone had a chance to review? And if so, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve minutes for our prior meeting.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance 879-23, the original budget ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024. Good morning. Good evening.
So this is just amending a few select budget items that we felt that were material enough that justified a change just based on activity throughout the year this year. I had touched on these at the prior meeting that we would need to make a few adjustments to the budgets. That's what this is, just amending our budget on a few items. So you have that in front of you, but reducing the M and O tax by 250,000 as a result of that rate inversion that we touched on. Sales tax coming down 200,000. Again, that's just to slow down some of the collections that we've seen this year versus what we had budgeted. And then you can see the offsets. So basically, we're reducing a few expense items there. So you're not having to pull anything out of reserves. The transfer needed to go to your debt service fund is reduced just because of the way the rates were structured. So that's down. We only need to move 100,000 there now. And then that council-approved expenditures is being reduced because, again, the offset and reduction of revenue on the general fund. So that's just trying to account for that. So that way, for the rest of the year, we kind of know, hey, here's what we have available in the budget for the items. That's why we're going about doing this. A few changes in the water fund. One is we're moving, increasing the engineering for some additional project work that was done this year led to some development that's going to go out of the water fund. And then also getting with Michelle on the water purchases in terms of what that dollar amount need would be. We felt we need to adjust that item. And then also, you can see the transfer from water to wastewater, reducing that from 400 to 200,000. And you'll see that blow in the user chart and the wastewater. And again, that's just because wastewater has done well this year. The user fees have done well in terms of the rate change there. So that actually is offsetting that transfers. We don't need to do quite as much, which was the goal, is hopefully that fund can eventually be standalone and you're not having to supplement that with the water fund. So that's just kind of a summary of the changes that we felt kind of necessary based on the activity this year. Any questions?
That answered all of mine. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? If not, do we have a motion, please?
Do we have an ordinance?
I do. Would you like for me to read the captions?
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, amending ordinance 879-2023, the original budget ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30 of 2024. For the city of Willow Park, Texas, funding accounts in the budget due to unforeseen situations containing findings providing for savings and separability providing an effective date.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I would just say I think you reviewed the ordinance and you're good with that.
Yes.
That's my only question.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider the expansion of driveway approaches for the 2022 street projects. We have a couple to speak, please. First is Frances Horch. Then you have three minutes, please.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, thank you for your service to our community and for the opportunity to speak before you. Chief Franklin and Chief Snyder, thank you for your continued efforts to keep our city safe. My name is Frances Horch and I live at 901 San Bass Court. Firstly, during the last two council meetings, I reached out to you and asked for your help in resolving the damages my property easement sustained during the road construction. I provided a list of unresolved road construction, property easement damages with some of the photos. Currently, once again, I reach out to you for your assistance in resolving these damages because they have not been resolved and are repaired. Respectfully, I would like to know the status and/or your plan of what you propose to do to repair the damages which are on the list I have provided. Secondly, with respect to the June 11th agenda item number 10 that Councilman Rennenbaum read for action and Willow Park, June 21, 2024, posting in the community news that was titled Notice of Intention to Issue City of Willow Park, Texas Certificates of Obligation. I respectfully ask that the council members address the following questions that were not described in the narrative Mr. Rennenbaum read nor the notice that was published in the community news. For example, for the sake of transparency, specifically what land and what rights of way does the city intend to acquire? Specifically, what self-supporting revenue sources is the city referring to to pay off the debt? And if the self-supporting revenue sources is insufficient to pay off the debt, how much will the property owners and our citizens be taxed to cover the debt since the notice specifically states that the city is obligated to levy ad valorem taxes to pay such debt obligations? And are the certificates of obligation for the contractual obligations to be incurred because of the proposed annexations, the city's purchase of land, extraterritorial jurisdiction, and the proposed treatment of other jurisdictions cities wastewater? I thank you for your time and assistance in these matters.
Thank you. John Avanen?
Good question regarding the driveways. I was going to speak on the barges. Can you do that?
Sure.
Hey, I'm John Avanen, 49 Crown Road. I'll be brief. I've been out of town for a couple of weeks and through the communications of our group, it's my understanding that the barges will not degrade and the slope will not be changed. And it's going to be hydro mulched and maintained by the city once a month. Is the city going to pull out the weeds that were there because that did not stop the erosion? And are you going to regrade or regrade the ditch because they are eroded? And if you're only maintaining it once a month, that still leaves three weeks a year or three weeks a month for us to maintain our own yard.
Thank you. Elizabeth Avanen?
She submitted her written.
Okay, we've got it here. Thank you. Brad McCurley?
Could you take two down and pass it around? Brad McCurley, 109 Trinity Drive. I'm going to give you guys just a few seconds to pass that around. I think this is my fourth time coming to council. So I'll start off kind of the same way I have. Won't invite you to my house now because the pool temperature is about 91. You don't want to come in our pool right now. But what the city told me a while ago, a couple of months ago, was I need to bring this before council regarding, I'm going to use a different term now. Our driveway entry has been changed. The size and the shape has been changed. Last council meeting, I provided you with photos of homes and properties, their driveway entries on San Bass Court, Trinity Court, Trinity Drive, some that have been changed and added to. One of my questions is, it sounded like at the last council meeting that council was going to look into the driveway issue, but I heard Crown Road mentioned. I did not hear anything regarding Trinity. And so I've got myself and another neighbor here that lives on Trinity, so I'd love clarification on that. If it's just Crown that you're looking at or will you also look at specifically my property? And then secondly, what I want to just show you in the pictures is the ditches. First picture you'll see was taken early this morning. I think I just need clarity on will the city be maintaining that? It's been, I think, about five weeks or so. And so I don't know when they'll be planning on doing it. So I would just love to know what that schedule kind of looks like for that. Second, I just wanted to show you, you're going to have to flip the one around. Because of all the rain that we've received, and no one's fault, which we're very thankful for, but all the dirt has kind of eroded away. And so that's just all rock now. And that's kind of right in front of my house, the ditch. And so I don't know if that's something the city at some point is going to come back over or if you're just saying, hey, we're okay with it being rocks there. So I just want to bring that to your attention. And again, there may be other homeowners that have something similar, but that's just what we're seeing. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Palmer?
Try to hurry. Okay, I wanted to mention, I don't want to be here. It's my fourth time. A lot of people contacted Eric and myself. I don't think it'll help to be at the city council meeting, so our crowd is a lot less. I wanted to mention the second ambulance pulling into a driveway at 95 and Crown, got the patient in, couldn't get out. So it's a matter of time for something bad really happens. Eric is traveling for the Air Force tonight, couldn't be here, so I'm here again. He wants me to talk. At the last city council meeting, we were told the city was going to use 12-foot standard. I see some changes, possibly 14-foot standard. Last Sunday, Colonel Eric Hoops and I, we went out. We took two hours in the heat. We measured 26 driveways. As you can see in the color pictures that we did and also the handouts, the driveways we measured, basically this is proof, the only standard there is, is there is no standard. So the addresses are on the left. And you can see we've got the width of the street and the width of the drive at the property line. So we did both. I'll list them. 34 feet, 18, 57, 40, 26, 16, 39, 20, 33, 18, 38, 28, 43, 15, 6, 30, 20, 24, 17, 26, 18, 24, 20, 32, 21, 22, 6, 18, 23, 18, 37, 37, 26, 6, 14, 50, 15, 38, 26, 33, 20, 38, 14, 40, 22, 6, 37, 6, 15, 6, 40 feet, 18 feet, 49 feet, 23 feet, 28, 14, 28, 6, 26, 6. I have a lot of small driveways for you, but I don't have time for those. So we've also, we've got those measured, too. For mine and the others, widening the street makes the ditch closer to the apron, which diminishes our turning radius. Basically, that's what a lot of us have come here to talk about over and over again. We're only asking for our turning radius back that we had. We're not asking for anything more. I'm actually an advocate for a lot of the neighbors who contacted us, don't want to come here again, don't want to stand here and talk again. So I'm an advocate for them to come here again. I have a letter that I wanted to leave that I'm formally asking someone, possibly the hired city engineer for the city council that they mentioned, to drive down east on Rancho's Road with a truck and a 15-foot trailer, turn right into my driveway without crossing the yellow lines with me in attendance so we can actually experience the deficit of turning radius together. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Jordan Phillips?
80 Crown, still the driveway issue. As I said a couple of times ago, I had to miss the last two. Just cannot turn into my driveway with a trailer. We can get it done, but I have to pull into the neighbors and then back in, and my house sits up on a hill. So backing up a hill with a trailer is not possible. And like I said, the previous meeting, whole reason for us to move out here was to move my family's horses down here. How am I supposed to pull a horse trailer in there with this driveway? Previously, it was a gravel over a culvert deal with the grass. You can fix that. You can pull a trailer through that, make it work. Now I have concrete ditch on either side of the drive, and it's a three-foot drop on either side. Like she was just saying, off all the different drop sizes, it's 12-foot. Making a turn off that, it's not happening, especially with the way the gate and the fences. And of course, I can change that. So all I'm asking is, can we get somebody out there to walk it and look at the turn radius and maybe extend the crossover by two to three feet? And I know that was possibly added, but we just need to have it extended. Some people got curbs as well. That would have been nice to have a conversation with, but I moved in a month too late. Curbs would be great, especially because the two kids that I have now, they're going to turn in. They're going to drop a tire, just like that other people have had. Second thing is, all along the ditch on my property line now, there is now an inch gap between the top of dirt and the top of concrete. So the water's not even going in the ditch anymore. And on top of that, when they dug that ditch with the concrete, they left all the rocks that they did all along the backside there. So now it's just rock and dirt and then an inch of concrete to get over into the water. So what's the point of that? It's not doing anything. And then also the hydrose, which was a big deal last time I was here, but that hasn't changed. Or I saw somebody said they were going to do Bermuda, which would be great, but that hasn't done anything. So now it's just rock, dirt, and water not even flowing in there. So if there is an engineer, like she was saying, that we could go out there and walk and show him and figure out how to get the grade behind the concrete ditch higher to make it into the concrete ditch or they could come back and shave the top of it so the water actually flows into it, the whole purpose of it, that would be great. But the biggest issue, being able to turn into my driveway with a trailer, that's the biggest thing. I'm only asking for like two feet, maybe. Three feet would be great. That's just all I'm asking for. So I think that seems, everybody else here is asking for just a little bit more grace in the turning area. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Derrick?
Yeah.
Derrick, are you up?
Okay. So staff and we got together, discussed what the options were for essentially creating a new standard or another standard for certain driveways. The city's current standard is 12 feet and five-foot turn radiuses. The city doesn't have an alternate standard for any other situation. So based on, you know, something other than just a subjective or just a random, you know, pick this or pick that, we talked about the width of the road. In this case, Crown Road is now 30 feet. We added six feet on either side of it. And so our thought was that it would make some sense to adjust the driveways to accommodate the larger width. And somebody mentioned that, you know, that that does narrow the ditches on either side necessarily. And so we looked at various options for doing that. And again, other than just picking a number out of the air, we looked at what some other driveways and some other areas and other entities might do. And so what we came up with as a group was a 14-foot drive with an eight-foot turn radius. So we'd be increasing the driveway, two feet on either side, and then widening the turn radius at the road. And that's what we recommended as an alternative, to create a standard for the city to accommodate that on a road that was 30 feet or wider. And so you're going to go from a typical residential street of 26 to 30 and then on up. But 30-foot and wider, the equivalent of a 14-foot width and an eight-foot radius, equivalent of that.
Okay. Any questions for Derrick?
We have estimates on what that is?
Yeah, we've actually, because of some of the drives that we've already worked on, and they range from about $1,700 to $2,100 per driveway to extend both sides and do what we're talking about. So roughly that. Depending on, you know, how we apply the criteria, they're somewhere between 20 and 25 driveways, we think, that would be, that this would apply to. And so you can do the math, roughly around $50,000.
Any other questions for Derrick?
And who do, we'd have to release that as a contract if it's under 50 or how?
Yeah, we can do it. If it's under 50, we can go ahead and contract with, I guess you have a?
There's two or three.
Yeah.
That we've talked.
We would not have to go through the bidding process if it's under 50. It sounds like it will be.
Any other questions or do we have a motion?
Not so much a question, but just a comment to say I have driven it a couple of times now after council meetings and agreed that if it was my house, I wouldn't want to turn into some of those driveways as well, whether it's you have to cross going a left-hand turn or turning right into it. So I appreciate y'all taking a look at this and trying to make this right for the citizens that just give that level of comfortability for returning what it should feel like to live at your home. So I appreciate everybody that's put time and effort and energy into this to make it, hopefully make things right. I know that we'll probably have more comments at other times, and that's fine, keep them coming. But we appreciate the staff and engineers continuing to look into this and hopefully make this right.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. Anybody else have a comment or question? I'll make a motion to approve the expansion of the driveway approaches as presented by staff.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I'd just like to thank staff for working on this. My comment would be, I am supportive. I will vote for this. I made the comment at one of the first meetings that we changed the road. We need to look at a new standard. I would love to make every person out there happy. And I know we're not going to make even half the people happy with this, but I do believe a higher standard for 30-foot roads is necessary. So that's my only comment.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
So in the last meeting, we had this, we decided to table something to take a look at later. Do we need to cancel? How do we do? What are we doing here from a?
How do you want to undo?
We put it back on the agenda. So it's now been opened back up. So essentially, you can take action on this motion, override your last.
Okay. And then the question from engineering. So do we have this documented then? This is going to be our standard going forward or just for the wide roads or how does that work?
We, councilmember Young has asked us to create a language for a standard that we will do, that we'll actually need to go into your development standards document. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Willow Park and the Texas Municipal League for 2024, 2025 cyber liability and data Willow Park and the Texas Municipal League for 2024-2025 cyber liability and data breach response coverage.
Yes, this is a requirement from TML. They've created a new cyber fund, and for us to take advantage of this should a cyber attack occur, we're going to need to do an interlocal agreement. It used to be part of our insurance coverage through TML IRP, but now they are requiring a interlocal agreement between us and TML. Same coverage, same cost. It's just one more bureaucratic step that TML wants us to take.
So this is just, we're adding the interlocal agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Grimes? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute the cyber liability and data breach response interlocal agreement.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Lido Independent School District for advertisement.
Yes. So we've been, at one point last year, we tried to do some enhanced advertisement with the Lido ISD to promote Willow Park. We missed the deadline. Essentially, what we're talking about are ads at football games and sporting events. Seems to be quite a few people there on Friday nights. And so one of the things we want to do is promote the community and promote our local businesses in relationship and strengthen our association with the Lido ISD. And so we would recommend that y'all approve the contract. It is a, it says three-year in here, it's, excuse me, it's a five-year agreement at a cost of ten thousand dollars a year. And these are eligible for hot funds.
So this is all going to come out of hot tax?
Yes.
And then what's our total tax, hot tax a year coming in?
Hot tax, Candy? What do we have in hot tax right now? Quarterly, we're getting...
We're getting seventeen thousand a month right now, so we've got...
That's two hundred a year.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what we have right now. Four hundred thousand, maybe?
Yeah.
And we're around there.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian? Leah?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Did you have a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
I may.
You may.
How will we approach the businesses within Willow Park so that way everybody has an opportunity?
It's not going to be a specific business, so we can't come out and say, and I'm just going to say railhead, because that's where I had lunch. We can't say, go eat at railhead. But we can use it to promote, hey, if you're coming in for homecoming, you're coming in for senior night or graduation, come stay at our hotels, come stay at our, eat at our businesses, you know, see what's in Willow Park. That's the idea of the ad campaign.
Shop local. Okay. Any other questions?
I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Lido Independent School District for advertising campaign promoting the city of Willow Park using hot funds. I'd like that added to the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
My only discussion on that would be because of, I would think the ad has to meet hot fund requirements. If we could have a policy or some sort of review to make sure that whoever is responsible for our ad understands what their requirements are, that they meet that allocation, so a policy in place. That's my only comment.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a conceptual schematic design for the city hall's parking lot frontage as prepared by Westwood Professional Service, Inc., and create plans for design development and construction. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is related to the contract with Westwood Professional Services to beautify the frontage of City Hall with landscaping and increasing the parking area to improve the functionality of the frontage for our building. We're presenting the attachment that's in your, in your stuff there. Packet. Thank you. So for the attached concept design plan, the cost estimate was approximately one million fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. That included the demolition and site preparations, the pavement, the layout design, the lighting, electrical, and the planting and irrigation, and includes a thirty percent contingency. This new design concept will increase the parking lot by thirty-one spaces to total seventy-six. It has a green space in the middle for flex areas, seating areas, and that will also be where the Christmas tree would be located. It has a new location on the pavement box to not drive around the building, so the pavements, you can actually go around the parking lot as opposed to circling the building that's sort of unsafe. And then raising the flower beds with a letter sign that would have the city hall name, or the city's name. And also, it would designate the possible relocation for Memorial Park in the frontage. Upon design approval, Westwood is prepared to continue forward with the sixty percent design development and ninety percent final construction plans, the scopes of the services which are already included in their contract. Staff has reviewed the design presented and recommends approval. Proceed for the creation of design development and construction plans by Westwood Professional Services.
Brian, would you like to present how funding would occur?
We have some, so when we, again, I think it's clear we're not asking for the million tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
We're asking them to move forward.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're not asking for the million tonight. I think we're asking for permission to move forward.
Just to move over with the design.
Yeah. But generally speaking, we do have some overages. When we bought the parking lot, we had to buy it in two separate portions. We do, we did have some contingency in there. I think we have roughly half a million in there at the moment. We also have another two to three hundred thousand that has not been budgeted, regardless of the budget amendments tonight, that we could apply to this, and then we can budget the remainder in the next fiscal year. I don't anticipate this coming out of this year's budget, it will be next year's budget.
So we were just talking about the hot tax. So is any of that applicable to this update?
I don't want to say no, not necessarily. I think if we do things with the trail system and we somehow put a trailhead there, I think you could probably make that applicable for it. See, attorney's telling me no, so forget that idea. That was, that was horrible.
Good idea, Greg.
What law school did Pat go to?
So all we're doing tonight is starting the process?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Approving the engineering. I just don't want to make a motion to approve the engineering if we don't have a thought of how we're going to...
We have, me and Jake have had several discussions on it, and there will be some options for council as we move forward.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Tony, are we doing irrigation as well within this?
Yes.
We are creating, and the area where we're looking at potentially putting our tree, are we also doing electrical as well?
Yes.
So that way, we don't have to run an extension cord?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're doing flagpoles?
There's...
There is, on their flagpole on the, I guess the right side of that green space.
Super. Looks great.
On the item I sheet that's in there?
Mm-hmm.
You can check on there. It has an electrical spot there, total show, picture, site lighting, outlet box.
And I'll just say, having met with Westwood, Eric, to some of those questions, they work with their civil department to maximize the use of what we already have as far as electrical and drainage, and not rip out things and put them back in. So they were very cautious on that design.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a conceptual schematic design for city hall's parking lot frontage as prepared by Westwood Professional Services Incorporated, and create plans for design development and construction for the future.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second. Pick one.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Next item, to approve a resolution to designate the designated officer or employee for truth and taxation. What in the world is this?
And so this is new to us, and Pat, I'm just curious, have you seen this with other CADs?
No, I actually, this, I've done it before, but not this format.
So we have a new chief appraiser in Parker County, and historically and traditionally, we have just told them as staff who gets the truth and taxation calculation form. It's a fairly complex and detailed form, and me and Candy have always completed that form and turned it into the CAD. I guess there were some issues with somebody somewhere, so they wanted us to do this resolution where y'all designate the officer or employee for truth and taxation. Basically, you will ratify what we've, what we're, staff is recommending is you ratify the way we've always operated, whereas me and Candy are named the designated officer or employee. I will say, if any council member would like to be designated the officer for the truth and taxation calculation, we'll be more than happy to add you to the document, and y'all can participate in the tax rate calculations.
I think we'll pass.
You've done a good job already.
Any other questions or discussion, or, so the designated officer, you're saying is going to be you and Candy?
Yes, sir. That's going to be the names in the resolution. Yes, sir.
Okay.
What happens when we have a retirement?
So I'm still going to be on there. This is going to be for this tax season, you'll have to do it again next year, and so...
Designate somebody new.
Mm-hmm. You'll have to do this every year. And if I win the lottery, I'll just, I'll write y'all a check for eight million bucks, and y'all don't have to worry about taxes for me.
Do we have a motion, please?
Do we need to read the caption for the resolution?
Pat?
Yes.
Do we need to read the resolution?
Yes. Please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, designate an officer or employee of the city of Willow Park, Texas, to calculate the known new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate for the city of Willow Park as required by Texas Tax Code two six point zero four.
Thank you. Ordinance has been read. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the ordinance as stated, as read.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Hudson Oaks and the city of Willow Park, providing wastewater treatment service to the city of Hudson Oaks.
Yes. We've been working with the city of Hudson Oaks for about a year, year and change, maybe, on participating in the wastewater treatment plant. It's actually a partnership. We will end up having the final discussion on this in executive session under local government code five-five-one, whatever, Pat, you know them. But tonight, I do have Sterling Naren, who's the city manager in Parker County. He's one of the top four city managers in the county. And would you, you got any comments you'd like to share?
Sure, thank you. You know, I would say that us not having a property tax, not having to have that, that kind of elevates me maybe one or two, but...
We can add you to the list.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Mr. Grimes said, this is something that kind of all came together a little over a year ago, whatever, maybe. Currently, just to give you a little bit of background on what we do, we don't currently have our own wastewater treatment facility. We send our wastewater to the city of Weatherford. We have an agreement with them that allows us up to a certain amount of capacity, and as Weatherford continues to grow, they need capacity. We're kind of getting through the upper echelons of what that capacity is, so we started looking at options for us, just to be completely transparent. At one point in time, we own land down on Bankhead. We are going through the permit process to put a, have a wastewater treatment facility down further south of, south of Bankhead. As we're going through that process, you guys were starting to go through the process of building y'all's new wastewater facility, and Mr. Grimes and I got together and said, you know, hey, we just did this water project, we're partners in that, we have a joint water pumping facility for both you guys at Willow Park and us. I said, is there something we could possibly do to make a partnership with wastewater as well? So this is kind of what we have talked about for a while. Basically, the nuts and the bolts of the agreement is an equity partnership in this, in the terms of basically you guys get eighty percent of the capacity. We would take twenty percent of the capacity on a reserving that basis. We would participate in twenty percent of the cost of operating that, and having a partnership where you have eighty percent equity in a wastewater treatment facility, we have twenty percent equity. So that's kind of the overall, and you guys are going to talk about it a little more in executive session. Just wanted to be here and answer any questions you guys may have, but we've had great, great success in partnerships in our water, providing water for you guys long-term, providing water for us long-term. We have partnerships with our trash facilities, if we're public in a six-city contract. I think this is just another big step for taking some cities in Parker County and hopefully some other cities looking around and say, hey, there may be some opportunities, so we can partner with some of our neighbors that benefits both cities or multiple cities all at once. So we're excited about the opportunities. I know you guys are underway constructing the facility. We are currently in the design of our line. As I said, we go, we send our wastewater to Weatherford, which is obviously on the other side of the town from you guys, so we would construct a line that would ultimately end up toward your new facility. So we are set to Thursday to, we have our council meeting, where we'll have this agreement in front of our council, and then also the funding for that project from our end. We'll be on there Thursday. Happy to entertain any questions or anything.
We appreciate the cooperation. Tell Mayor Tom we do also.
So what's the maximum capacity you're going to need in the future, looking down the road, five years or so, or ten?
Five years. So I mean, so right now, our contract with Weatherford is a hundred thousand a day on average. We are hovering about ninety right now. So when you talk about twenty percent of the facility, it's a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty thousand per day on average, and you average it out over the course of a year. So that's going to sustain us for the foreseeable future. Now, in the event that, we have some large tracts of land that happen, and honestly, the only residential that is on our sewer is the northern residential property, which is Red Eagle, about Mary Martin Elementary, if you're familiar with that area. And then our commercial corridor is on our sewer system. All of our residential on the south side, so like our Diamond Oaks neighborhood, Parker Oaks neighborhood, all those are on the south. So in the event, I don't think anybody in this room will probably be here the day that happens, that all that becomes to a point that it may want to be on a system forty, fifty years from now, that we, by that time, we'd be having our own facility. A hundred fifty is going to get us for the foreseeable future, for at least five years, five to ten years. And then in part of the agreement, too, obviously, you guys grow, we grow, in the event that this facility at seven hundred fifty needs to expand to a million or a million and a half, then both have the option to keep that same eighty, twenty split of those facilities. So it's ability for both cities to continue.
That's what I noticed in the agreement. It had, we're permitted for one million, but we're only building seven fifty now, so that, with a partner, that would allow us to have the capital to expand if they need it and we need it, and they want to partner, and that extra two fifty that we're already permitted for, that gets us closer to being to do, being able to do if they need more capacity.
Correct. And it's an option. Yeah, and it's an opt-in. I mean, if that's the point in time, you guys grow faster than us, and you need it, and we don't need it, then you can build a two fifty at your cost, and it just diminishes our equity stake. Exactly.
Any other questions for Sterling or Brian?
There's no motion to take at the moment. We're going to...
Do you want a motion to table it till after executive?
Do we need...
I don't think we need to discuss it executive due.
Do you, is there anything?
I don't think we have.
I think it's on executive.
It's on executive.
Well, we have, we can still take it in the executive for contract, right?
Yeah, but I...
We didn't list it, so...
There's no reason...
I'll make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement between the city of Hudson Oaks and the city of Willow Park, providing wastewater treatment service to the city of Hudson Oaks.
Second.
And now we can talk about whether we can do that.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Sterling, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sterling. Well, you need a copy of the contract, of the, of the agreement for Thursday night? Okay.
Next item, to approve a resolution to announce the city's intent to annex an approximately 1.034 acre portion of FM 1187 out of the, out of the Francisco Sanchez survey, abstract number 2346, H and T B Railroad Company survey, abstract number 647.
Mayor, we're going to pass.
Pardon?
We're going to pass on that.
Okay.
So, no action?
Okay. Item number 10, to consider a resolution authorizing the city of Willow Park to acquire and/or use the power of eminent domain to acquire the following two described properties for public use, i.e. the replacement of the Kings Gate Road Bridge over Clear Fork Trinity River, 0.1185 of an acre of land situated in the Isaac O. Henley survey, abstract number 619, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, and being a part of Lot 1, Block 1, Bell's Natural Stone addition, in addition to the city of Willow Park, Texas, recorded in cabinet C, Slide 117, plat records, Parker County, Texas, and also being a part of that certain tract of land described in a warranty deed to RTSB Enterprises, Inc., from RTSB Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Reg, recorded in instrument number 201, 911978, official public records, Parker County, Texas, executed on May 15, 2019. And B, .0807 of an acre, 3,514 square feet tract of land situated in Isaac O. Headley survey, abstract number 619, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, and being a part of Lot 1, Block 1, Trinity Meadows addition, in addition to the city of Willow Park, Texas, recorded in cabinet A, Slide 740, plat records, Parker County, Texas, and also being a part of that certain tract of land described in a warranty deed to Larry Lawley from Parker County Squaw Creek Downs LP, recorded in volume 22, 2539, page 1447, official public records, Parker County, Texas, executed on May 18, 2007.
Can the mayor reread the agenda?
Yes.
No.
I didn't quite do it.
Crystal, did you pass out the resolution of the council?
I have it in the executive chambers right now. Would you, would you like for me to hand it out now?
Would you want to do it in executive?
It's not on executive.
No, I, I said.
It's not listed on executive.
Yeah.
So, we have to do it in open.
So, basically, the resolution, as y'all well know, we're, we're in the process. We've entered into an advanced funding agreement with Tech dot. Tech dot is going to essentially pay for the replacement of Kings Gate Road Bridge over the Clear Fork Trinity River. Our obligation under that advanced funding agreement is to acquire the right of what is necessary to do that replacement bridge. So, they've identified two tracts of property as identified in that agenda item, and basically, we've made offers to both property owners, both an initial offer and a final offer. We're still in the negotiating stages. Before we, and if we have to utilize eminent domain, we have to pass a resolution. And that's what this resolution does. It essentially authorized the city manager to acquire the properties through negotiation, and if we cannot negotiate and acquire them that way, to commence eminent domain proceedings. And in that resolution, it has the appraised prices of both tracts. The first tract is 22,300, and the second tract is 29,330. We're both taking narrow strips of property on each side of the road where the bridge and railing will be located. So, this is a step we have to take to basically proceed forward with the acquisition of these two. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
This, this is, the resolution needs to be read.
Correct. Caption. You don't have to read the whole thing. If Crystal would read the caption, you can consider.
Anybody have questions on our intent of what we're?
So, are existing appraisals that we have on the property, that's what's valid and can be used for this, or?
Yes.
Go through more?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to at least offer them that. We have.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We've offered them the appraised.
Was there one appraisal on each property, or two, or?
Yes, each one. Yes, sir. The appraised prices are on exhibit C.
Yeah.
And they, and they rejected both offers?
Yes.
Are there any counter offers?
No.
No.
I think one of them will have, one of us concerned about, they're extending the railway or the guard rail down, and that was how they accessed the front part of their property. And so, I think we're going to be able to grade the frontage so they can have a way to mow it, things like. There won't be a true access point for off-highway, but it will allow them to maintain it. So, we're going to discuss that with them and see. Otherwise, both of them, it's just narrow strip, it's just, we really hadn't had a whole lot of meeting discussion. I've spoken with the lawyer for one of them, and he didn't know a whole lot about it, so I suspect we'll have some more discussion.
Okay, any other questions for Pat?
Does this hold up the construction or the funding from the state for the bridge, or, or is that moving in a separate timeline? I mean, is it still moving forward, or is this?
Oh, yeah, it's still moving, yes.
Yeah, we have to, we're supposed to have it done by February, I think you said.
Yes.
Correct.
Acquisition of property, uh, February. We're still on, or, I believe it's left of July, I believe it is, or something like that.
Okay. You want to read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Willow Park, designating and authorizing the city manager or his designee to approve the acquisition and execute all contracts and other legal instruments necessary or convenient to acquire two tracts of real property required for the Kings Gate Road Bridge replacement project, and to authorize initiation of eminent domain proceedings pursuant to law if necessary.
Thank you. Any other questions for Pat or Brian? If not, do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Before we go to.
Executive.
Executive session, the city received an award from the North Central Texas Council of Governments for the regional, a regional corporation award presented to the cities of Fort Worth, Hudson Oaks, and Willow Park for the water project we did a couple of years ago.
We started in 18 and finished in 23.
So, this was an award that the Public Works went and received was this last week, I think. So, congratulations to them and, and the council staff and everyone for participating in that.
I do have one quick announcement, and it will be in supplements, the manager comments later, but I do want to have an, I do have an announcement. As y'all know, Candy is retiring, and we have tried our best to convince her to not retire for another three or four years, and her fiance is sitting next to her, and he decided that was not a good idea. And so, she decided she was going to travel and see the Northern Lights and by Winnebago and drive all over the place.
Awesome.
But I do have an announcement to make. Andy, come forward, please. This is Andrea Andy Sailor. We hired her roughly four months ago, four months and change. She's been the front desk receptionist in that time. She's prob, I told her today, she's the best front desk receptionist I've ever hired. She handles a lot of problem customers with ease and grace, but most notably, she has picked up on what we are doing around here as far as she, in a matter of weeks, she took over all the billing. She, she's doing a number of the financial assistance for Michelle and Candy, and so I'm going to announce tonight that Andrea Andy, as we call her around here, Sailor, will be the new financial director upon Candy's retirement.
Very good.
We're just dropping the C and adding the A. I have big shoes to fill, but I'm, I'm excited.
You'll do well.
You're going to do great.
Very excited.
Thank you.
You're a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going into executive session at 6:52 PM. We've come out of executive session at, gosh, I can't read that clock. It's late.
8:24.
8:24 PM. Okay, and we have a motion on one of the subjects.
Yes, I'd like to.
In executive session.
To approve, to authorize staff to execute the contract for purchase of real estate property at 205 Canyon Court.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, council. Late meeting, a lot of stuff going on. Thank you for your help. Any city council comments?
If I could start with, we had citizens speak again tonight. Some of them have some very specific questions that are best addressed by our staff. If staff could kind of go through some of those comments that we heard and recognize where they might need to contact some of those citizens to answer those questions, I would appreciate that. I want to thank all of our citizens for participating in what has been a difficult project to kind of finish up. A lot of the things that have happened, a lot of the questions have been questions that are directed towards our staff, which is a wonderful staff, and I would encourage our citizens to work with our staff to answer questions. Our city council just does not work here all week long and have the answers to a lot of those questions, so it's always very helpful if we can address the staff that's responsible for those questions. And if there's issues with that, like there were with this in particular, where council had to address changing standards, providing funding, things like that, then that's when council can help.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to echo Leah's comments, and also, I want to wish Rose a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Rose. Oh, I forgot, our city manager's coming up on a milestone. Is it Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday. I was, I was 50 once. It wasn't bad. Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Young pup.
Anyone else?
When, when do we start providing inputs for budget?
So, I will be out of the office and out of the state for the next 10 days or so. So, when I get back, we'll start putting the budget templates together. I was going to have a budget calendar for you guys tonight, and it slipped my mind on, on city manager comments, but we're looking at adopting the budget at either the September, it's the 9th or the 23rd, one of the two meetings there, and I'll, I'll have that calendar out to you guys, and then we'll work back from there. The CAD is not going to give us any information on budget until the end of July, first part of August, so we can, we can put the enterprise funds together, but the general fund, the tax rate, that's going to, that's going to take some time in August.
Okay, anyone else? Motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good night, Irene.
Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.